Okay, everyone. It is 6:12. We have a quorum of five folks, so I would like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all, as always, for being here and giving your time. I'm going to go right into the agenda. And the first item of business, as always, is approval of the last month's minutes, in this case, for April. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read them. Does anybody have any edits to propose to April minutes?
Right, um, I'd like to make a motion to table the items referring to the construction.
Oh, hang on, Joaquin, I just, I'm just, yes, we will definitely get there. We're not at the contract yet. Yeah, we're just talking about approving the April minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
That's okay. No, 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 don't worry about it. Do you have, do you have any edits to the April minutes?
No.
You're good. Okay, and anyone else, any edits? Okay, in that case, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the April minutes as presented. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, aye. All right. Minutes are adopted for April. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the financial report. Joaquin, as treasurer.
Okay, I'm going to be brief, and I'm going to let Robert give you the details, but basically, just like last month, there has been very little change in the monthly month-to-month figures. And that's not surprising, since we're basically in a standstill situation, operations going on on a digital format. So, basically, our revenues have remained the same. There's a difference of about $25,000. Salaries, there is about a $5,500 difference from last month. And for total non-personnel, $6,000. So you can see that the numbers are very small. So I'll let Robert take it from here. Robert?
Sure. Thanks, Joaquin. So last month, as of the end of March, we were anticipating about a $226,000 surplus this year. That number has actually crept up to about $252,000. As Joaquin mentioned, we're projecting about $26,000 more in additional revenue. The primary driver of this was a grant award through the New York City Charter Center. It was kind of a competitive grant application related to, excuse me, coronavirus relief. So we realized an award there of about $24,000, $25,000. So that's the primary change to revenue. On the expense side, we did make some small adjustments to a handful of buckets. On retirement, we trued up just the employer contribution costs, where Joaquin said we should realize about $5,500 in savings. And then additionally, on the other-than-personnel side, we're looking at about $6,000 more in expenses. We received what should be our last student transportation invoice. So we adjusted that figure up to the tune of about $4,000. And then also trued up our office expense line. So all in, we're anticipating more revenue than we were last month, and expenses are remaining relatively flat. So we do anticipate an operating surplus of approximately $252,000. Moving on to the second page of the financials, this is the school's cash flow. So you can see at the bottom, we are projected, we closed the month with about $518,000 in cash, which is very strong. We had previously kind of been projecting April and June to be a little bit tight, based off of savings and where we project to land. Our cash won't, should not get below $400,000, so we are well-positioned there. Again, due to the cyclical nature of the per-pupil payments in New York, we receive per-pupil funding every two months. One month is cash positive, and the following month seems to be cash negatives. So that's kind of why you're seeing that $70,000 cash net income for the month of May that we anticipate, again, just as a result of our receiving per-pupil funding indeed last week of April. So again, cash position remains strong, and then we realized a significant increase in that just shy of a million dollars as of the June close, because the New York City Department of Education prepays your cash receipts based off of anticipated enrollment for the next fiscal year in June, where our enrollment is effectively doubling. Moving on to the balance sheet, again, a strong cash position of half a million, more than half a million dollars. When looking at last month, we made a significant dent in our accounts receivable. That is kind of twofold. One, we will realize cash from the New School Venture Fund that they will be paying. And then, secondly, just due to the quarterly claims of grants, we made our quarter three Title I and Title II grant claims, as well as the final CSP drawdown. That has decreased significantly, so we're only carrying about $200,000 in accounts receivable. The only other things of note here would probably be on the liability side. Our accounts payable balance is $109,000 for a school in its first year. I think that's, you know, pretty much been par for the course, around six figures of an AP balance. Other current liabilities, $340,000. That is wholly consistent of our Raza Bridge loan. We, that is a $100,000 decrease when compared to last month. So we made a payment there, which is good. And then the $434,000 in deferred revenue that you're seeing is, again, the prepayment of the March per-pupil funding from the DOE. Long-term debt, as we've held there, has been consistent. That is the TEQ lease payment, which we continue to make monthly payments on. And then you'll see our equity has increased to $206,000, again, as the result of our year-to-date surplus of $127,000.
For the, for the benefit of the panelists, the attending NICE Ed officer, the TQM, the TQM lease he's referring to is the lease of long-term lease payment of equipment, right, of office equipment.
Office equipment and furniture, that is.
Not a lease. Let me rephrase that. It was paid over a lease, over an installment basis, but yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the dashboard, again, what you saw for the first time last month, nominal changes here. So again, on the top right, on the revenue and expense side, just some very small changes to revenue and expense, and where we anticipate ending June 30th, as far as net income goes. And then, again, the graphic, the second set of data points would be the graphical representation of the SED financial reporting metrics. At this point, again, we meet three or four of them. The only one, which is kind of in limbo right now, is the debt-to-asset ratio, which is the result of our carrying the the liability due to Raza. So again, with our payment structure and where we anticipate being at the end of June, that ratio will be in compliance, and we will exceed all four, we anticipate exceeding all four SED benchmarks at the end of the year. And then, moving on to the bottom section, again, student enrollment is reported once every two months to the Department of Education. So the last time you saw this, we actually had the same numbers. So no changes here to our forecasted enrollments, and thusly, our forecasted per-pupil and special education per-pupil revenue. And again, the orange lines that you're seeing at the end of the two graphs on the bottom are just a graphical representation of where we anticipate being next year, once we actually roll into fiscal year 21.
Paula, just for, for the benefit of Paula, this pictorial depiction was developed by the executive team and Robert, and, shall we say, debuted in last, last month's meeting. And again, it's another way to understand the figures and gives a richer, a richer portrayal of things.
Yeah, it's very clear.
I know it's it's a little different for board members to read over these on your own computer on a Zoom call. But I want to make sure we pause. Are there any questions on any piece of the, of the monthly financials before we talk about the annual budget picture?
Right, I just want to make one more note. Normally, I issue a treasurer's report, which is basically essentially what Robert has, has, has mentioned, with just the details of the sources of the ups and downs, right? But this time, because we've had a lot to do, and because we have the benefit of the pictorial, we didn't do it this time, okay? So I just wanted to say that. We'll probably will return to that depending. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions from the board regarding the financials? So far?
No.
All right. Do we want to move into the budget, Michael?
Well, I just, just by way of an update, normally, this time in the year, and according to our schedule, we would be presenting a, an annual budget. And this has been a very busy month for our team, for our treasurer, for our finance committee in getting ready for that. It's also been a busy month of, I think, a couple of back-and-forth updates coming out of Albany. And so where we were sort of on notice to expect a shift in the state budget a few days ago, that didn't end up coming out. So I'll let Roberto add more, more summary if we want to add that. But suffice it to say, we've been trying very hard, as an organization, to be preparing a conservative budget, which we have all ready to go, to withstand a 10% cut in per-pupil funding, and with a cash plan to withstand another 10% after that. And that hasn't been an easy process. But Bob and others have advised us, you know, this is why you leave that extra month in the year, in case there's this level of budget uncertainty. And so, for that reason, the finance committee didn't bring it out of committee for this meeting, because we just kind of need a bit of a clearer picture. And colleagues, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Roberto, Bob, Joaquin.
The only thing I'll say is that we've, we've gone through our first budgeting process, thanks to the efforts of Michael leading operations, certainly Myra Torres going through and pencil by pencil, counting out the expenses, making sure that we're accounting for everything, and preparing ourselves for a future that, for the most of us, is unknown. And so, from a budget perspective, so taking the extra month, getting the guidance from Albany, and incorporating that guidance into our new budget for next year, we will approve it. We will present it to the board for approval at the next board meeting prior, before the fiscal year begins, obviously.
Right, and just to follow up, we've had some, excuse me, advisory discussions on, on this matter, and they definitely are going the right direction. And it is conservatively cast. But again, you know, who's to say what will, what will come next? And I think they were trying to use this extra time to see if more data could come out of the state office, so that they could, you know, anchor their, their assumptions. But it is, right now, casted in a rather conservative fashion.
Thank you all for that update. We look forward to seeing a, hopefully, how do I want to say, seeing a budget in our June meeting that is based in as much as information as we can possibly get.
And in light of that being the last board meeting, I know the committee will be meeting early and often, and, and the board at large will have plenty of early notice to review that, ask your questions, and so forth.
Yep. Okay, any questions? On that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of order. We need to do a revision to the agenda for tonight. The five items in the next section need to be tabled. Those were contracts that were coming to us from various contractors and/or lending agencies. We do not have those documents ready for submission to the finance committee. And I'll ask the finance chair to make a motion to that effect.
Yes, I move that the so-referenced five items be tabled for inclusion in next month's agenda.
All right. I second the motion. All in favor of adopting the revised agenda with the five tabled items?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion is pass. And actually, I'd like to, now that we've gotten the items tabled, if we could just switch the order a little bit, I know that on the updates, we have a lot to dig into. So I'd like to kind of go right into the one contract we do need to vote on, if that's all right with everyone?
Yes. Thank you.
Absolutely. HR services. Go ahead, Michael.
So I will not belabor the point, but this is a significant business relationship for LEAP Academy. We, in our founding year, worked with an HR back-office company called Trinet, which provided payroll services, human resources, services of all kinds, including health benefits and other, other benefits. It was not entirely satisfactory. It got the job done, but we had some concerns about the level of service that we were receiving, particularly for our young teachers and our Spanish-speaking teachers, and just didn't, didn't feel that we had the level of service that we wanted. So Ms. Torres, who's on the meeting, and, and Bob worked closely together to evaluate our options and do a price and service comparison. And the, the leading contender that we wanted to evaluate was a company that many charter schools work with called Little Bird HR. Little Bird's been in the New York City charter school sector for a long time. We thought about going with them for year one, but the price comparisons were not favorable at that time. But now they are, and so we are looking at not only a, an improvement in service and an equal or better level of benefits for our employees, but also some cost savings, which made, made it an easier decision for us to recommend, because there isn't a big trade-off. They're actually look to be better. Bob, you've worked with them on other, with, with other clients, and so I assume you still feel enthusiastically about making that switch?
I, I do. Unlike Trinet, which is a national company, Little Bird focuses specifically on the New York City charter space. So they are very plugged in to the goings-on in both the city and the state. And then, to Michael's point, just on the customer service side, you have a dedicated account manager and HR rep that handles any HR business functions that LEAP employees may have. So turnaround time on questions and inquiries, in our experience, has been significantly better than other PEO options. And then, secondly, now that LEAP is going into its second year, has gained some scale on the employee side. Myra and I did a full cost analysis across all levels of benefits, health, dental, short-term disability, and vision. And on a per-employee basis, we should realize some benefit savings by making the switch as well. So to me, our organization works with four other schools that contract with Little Bird. We've had nothing but positive experiences with them, and they, just based off of how difficult it's been under some circumstances to get any semblance of customer service from Trinet, like we, as your financial consultant, have at least fully endorsed this move.
Can I ask a question, please? So is it, is it primarily the the situation now versus last year? Is that, looking forward, you're going to have more employees, i.e. more teachers, well, and, and related staff? And that basically has put scaling, you've scaled up your operation. So is that basically, so that's where the overall cost per employee has gone down?
I would say so, Joaquin. And then to layer on top of that, as you are going out and soliciting quotes as a brand-new school, oftentimes, you don't know what your staff is going to look like, as far as age, gender, you know, there's maternity leave factors that go in there. So we have a much more educated guess as to what our staff looks like, what percentage of people are enrolling in retirement and health benefits and things like that. So, you know, as far as going out and getting a very accurate price quote for the benefits cost of this service, we have much more data this year, and Little Bird is able to kind of lock in on a number as far as, you know, employer cost of health insurance, employee cost of health insurance, what are short-term and long-term disability benefits look like, things like that. So they can make a much more educated guess as far as the pricing goes. So yeah, I think it's twofold. Certainly, the scale is one. The more employees you have, the cheaper your benefits are going to be.
Putting aside the customer service, which is totally important, are they basically on par with our current vendor in terms of price per?
We're, we're actually going to realize some savings.
You need to stop. That's fine. Now I'm happy.
It, it will be five figures of savings.
We've got savings and better customer service.
Absolutely.
That's fabulous.
Out of curiosity, what does it come down to per employee in terms of savings? You've got $115 per employee with Little Bird. Do you know?
At the, at the, at the end of the day, just on the HR side, outside of the benefits cost, we are going to realize about $10,000 to $15,000 in savings. So given our anticipated enrollment numbers next year, I mean, it's like $300 or $400 an employee. Costs for a, a, a single person with no, like, spouse or children, on average, on health insurance, we're seeing like $200 to $220 in savings on the benefit side as well.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you for all of your work and research on this.
I love their letterhead.
Maho, you have a question?
I noticed on that they, they already have put together the team that who would work with us. Are there any Spanish speakers on that team?
Yes, Myra, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, yes, it is. Part of, one of the requirements that we made while we were negotiating with them was to have an employee who speaks Spanish, due to the fact that a lot of our staff is Spanish, and yes, we will have someone available all the time to our team that speaks Spanish for them.
Great.
Thank you, Myra. Other questions?
Do you do motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the Little Bird contract for the following year.
I second it.
Seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, wonderful. Thank you all very much for that. Okay. And now we are moving into the updates portion of the agenda. Shall we start with the board bullets, and I'll let the leadership team present that information?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We monthly submit a list of what we call board bullets for the purpose of documenting activity between one month's meeting and the next. We also acknowledge, in some cases, the regular committee work. In this case, we have bullets that relate to the report that our principal made to the Education and Accountability Committee, and, and some allusions and some references to the finance committee. Before I go on, let me just once again thank Joaquin for his leadership on the finance committee, and on a monthly way to get these reports to us, and in a monthly way, spending the time necessary with our team to make sure that we are protecting everything that we do, and visioning for a very prospective future. And Joaquin will be presenting the budget next month. Our Accountability Committee is led by Melissa Jarvis-Sedeño and Gabrielle as well. And we have one other board member on that. By the way, Magdalena could not attend this evening, our board member, because she had a her father passed away, and I think she's still taking time with family. Just to let everybody know, and I know that you know that already, we, we sent, Myra sent some flowers and some food baskets over to the family. Just wanted to an update there. On the board bullets themselves, you have had an opportunity to go through those rather than reread them. Any questions on any one or many of the bullets? And I'll be glad to reference those and answer them as best we can.
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The summer school planning? You ready?
I'm ready.
We're ready.
I just want to know how is it different for scenario one, two, or three financially?
Yeah, we are going to be presenting this evening those various scenarios in our scenario planning document and discussion, Melissa. And we're happy to do a deeper dive on our summer school program. But, Michael, do you want to answer just a quick question on the budgetary implications of summer school?
Sure. So we are are we finally confirmed, Roberto, on some dedicated funding for this?
So on Friday of last afternoon, is that your question, Melissa? Are you, are you trying to just get at the budgetary implications?
I'm trying to get at if there's a plan, a thoughtful plan about scenario category one, two, or three, like, if, are we at a point where we would have to decide what is more important?
Oh, are you, so I think there's a difference between the three categories and the scenario planning document. Are you talking about the three categories that are under the board bullets under summer school?
Yes, that's because there would be some staffing implications for all three categories. I just wanted to know if there was some, are we planning to do thinking about?
Well, the planning, so, so the, so the plan that's out here in terms of the three categories is what we hope we were, were able to do, should we be able to have summer school in our building. And so we already are sourcing who are our teachers for this program. We already have a list of students who would fall under each category, and how many teachers we would need for that. So that all falls within the budget that we already had. It doesn't mean that we're deciding which one we're going to focus on. We're saying that we're doing all three, and that we're actually putting kids into, okay, you're going to go to this category, that category, based on the needs that you need.
Quick question. So I'm sorry, so on that summer school, did you factor in whatever space requirements might be needed, at least for the summer?
Okay. Yeah, so we have about 60 students that we would like to participate in our summer school programming. We're taking into consideration that if we're allowed to have students, and we probably need to follow some sort of guidelines for social distancing. So we are trying to reserve six of our classrooms and have about 10 to 11 kids per classroom, so that there's enough spacing for that social distancing.
Okay, because that, so that then break, brings the implication on the finance side. I believe Roberto or Michael was going to discuss a little bit about.
You know, we'll be talking more extensively about summer school in the scenario planning report, and Delly Ness has a report on that as well. On the financial side of our summer school, we made an application at the invitation of the New School Venture Fund for modest grant support for our salaried teachers for the summer. We've gotten word on Friday that the proposal has passed as of Friday internally. And I've been told that it's, it's going through channels for the delivery of the monies, and that's what we've been told. We've gotten a thumbs up on the grant request.
Right, so that, that would be about a $20,000 grant.
Does that cover most of your cost for, for that program?
That covers the teacher salaries.
So then we still have the, the maintenance of the facility and the lunches and things like that?
Michael and Myra put together a budget for summer school, and it's covered in our current budget.
Yeah, the, there's some materials costs. Obviously, there's also the fixed costs of the, of the facility. But it becomes a very manageable. But it becomes a very manageable expense uh and, and line item and, and well worth it. Would it make sense to, to talk a little more about the, the academics of the summer school at this point?
Well, I mean, would you mind if I just finish the, the board bullets? If there's nothing else, are there any other questions on the board bullets?
I have a question. Um, I'm wondering, I don't want to supersede any level of detail that we'll get into in the COVID scenario planning because I know essentially these two things dovetail quite a bit. But I'm wondering about our uh timing. I know that the program plan for summer school is going to be finalized by months and and I'm wondering when we're planning to communicate with parents about both summer school and about grading and report cards and what's our kind of what that sequence is going to be and around like the general estimation of timing for that.
The quick answer is that my, uh, Delly Ness and I just got through a conversation this afternoon about rolling out our communications cascade for all stakeholders. There's a lot of questions that are still not able to be answered. We cannot answer the question if we can come back to the building. That's primary. Uh, there's a lot of questions that still deal with the programming itself. It's not finalized and the team has worked hard. Delly Ness and the teachers and our counselor have worked uh unbelievably to try to pull together a program that is worthy and a program that will respond uh to the instructional needs of our kids. Uh, and that's still in development. We believe that in our messaging to our stakeholders and primarily our families, uh, as early as tomorrow, we will be able to let them know that yes, there will be a program. We cannot answer all the questions yet. I know that Delly Ness has a very comprehensive report on what that program could include. Uh, and we'll go into that in the scenario planning document discussion. Are there any other questions on the bullet document itself?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just around enrollment for the families that we're still um making sure to keep up with about uh confirming their enrollment for next year. Can you touch a little bit on how we are um keeping in touch and how, how often? I'm assuming it's the, the front desk folks that are doing that legwork.
Well, thank you. I mean, under the leadership of Maida and Michael's enrollment campaign, we now have uh, and I'll let Maida and Michael talk about enrollment per se, but to answer your question specifically, we have a director of family engagement. We have just today worked on a calendar that throughout the summer, we will have various touchpoints and calendar events that both that are Zoom based and or physical, the, physical events. If we're allowed to do that sometime in July or even August. Uh, those events include everything from hey, let's have a party to deliver the documents to the school that are necessary for enrollment to, hey, let's pick up uh the LEAP t-shirts. Or, and, and Maida honestly facilitates all of this through the front office people. We're also working on the communications that we're doing with our families on a daily basis. That involves welcoming, will not be in Benida for all our families. Today I just finished two families yesterday, two, two more families. Our goal is to have me visit with every single family, new family that comes into the building. And so we've been doing that as well. Michael or Maida, do you want to fill, fill in anything else on the enrollment side?
Yeah, we've been collecting uh most of the required documents online. There are a few where you really need to sit down with them in person. Uh, but we're using that as a way to make sure we're seeing commitment from families and then that triggers the meeting with Roberto. We're also continuing to have webinars with incoming families. One of the uh adjustments that we're making for the upcoming year is being more clear about uh the, the mutuality of the partnership. It's always been a core belief of ours that parents are partners. But now we're getting more specific, whether it's, you know, on time attendance, enrollment, homework. It's very clear what we're doing, but we're making sure every family has that conversation about what their life is going to look like. And that might include you're signing up for bus transportation. What does that mean? What's the backup plan? You know, uh, we want to make sure we get to know families and identify potential challenges early. So that we can, you know, we're gonna have a lot to reset when everybody comes back from this whole crisis. And so we want to make sure we're laying the groundwork for that culture with our families.
And just in the, in, are we taking any information, intake information about their technology just in the God forbid scenario that we are still remote at the time that the folks join us?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be doing uh more of that as we get in. Uh, we're also, uh, this was going to be in the budget presentation, but we're also budgeting to have a Chromebook for each student next year uh so that we're less dependent on their own home.
Then that also includes things like their own internet service, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So just to follow up with Gabrielle, it's probably good. And it sounds like you're, you're, you're doing that just to make sure you have a three sixty um degree questionnaire. And I'm also wondering, um, do, do they sign a contract with you guys? Sort of not a contract, but digamos como, like a compromiso, like, you know, an understanding?
It is not a legally binding. There is an expression of commitment. Uh, it, it is not, never stands in the way of actual enrollment, I hasten to add. But it is part of the community building that we're doing for next year.
Okay, I know we want to get into the, uh, thank you all. I know we wanted to get into the COVID scenario planning. So are there any other um, questions or comments about the board bullets? I, I actually one more comment, which is how exciting it is to see the expanded recruitment effort for teachers. I know that second year, it's kind of like you go into it with a lot more knowledge than you had the first year in addition to this, you know, kind of growing network of your own teachers who you can reach out to. So it's, it's really exciting to see. And then with the addition of uh the really hard work from Abby, thank you so much, Melissa, again, for connecting the school to that resource. Exciting to see that the, the different, the, not the existing efforts that we've made in the past kind of expanding even further, including the recruitment of Peace Corps volunteers who've had to come by or like at least a reach out, I should say, uh, that have come back from Central and South America. That was, that's a really great idea.
Delly Ness has been working directly with Abby and so Delly Ness, I, I, you know, recruitment is so important and you've done a bang up job on working with Abby on making sure we're getting maintaining that high level of quality teacher. We have a, we have a core of teachers right now that are just amazing. You know, you know, we always worry, can we match that? And we certainly haven't. And then some, so Delly Ness, you want, want to mention a little bit about your work with Abby?
Yeah, so Abby, um, just to clarify, she's a recruiter that we're working with. Uh, she and I have been working very closely in, in terms of where can we look for our teachers, um, what's their recruitment plan? Coming up with systems, um, and organization to that and putting a structure around it in terms of what's step one, what's step two. Who gets in contact with the candidate first? Um, when is it ideal for me to come in and have that one conversation with the candidate? And make sort of that culture emotional connection with them, um, thinking through what the interview process looks like now through this virtual world setting, right? So we've talked through what that would look like and have come up with best practices that work for us given um our special immersion model and how do we make sure we're screening for candidates um who speak fluent both English and Spanish. So it's been really beneficial to have her as a thought partner and someone to share this workload with. It's a lot of work recruiting teachers and finding the right people. Um, so I think it's a wonderful investment. And um she's definitely helped us streamline our process um and be more effective um and efficient with recruitment.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but um, you're the, the New York City Charter Center has a, a great ELL program. And I know you know, we're not primarily ELL school, but um, I mean, have you spoken to them, Michael? And like places like the Spanish Institute in New York, I don't know, is it worth like hosting the job on their board? Do they have something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this recruiter has helped us, uh, he's me finishing my pizza, sorry.
That's okay.
This recruiter has helped us um think about those kinds of, of collaborative uh outreach, you know, relationships that we can, we can use and just get word out through networks. Um, I'm sore, I don't want to tempt fate by describing the credentials of people who we haven't uh signed on the dotted line yet, but you will be pleased. We've gotten some really nice strong candidates uh in the door. The uh you, you mentioned the uh, the Spanish Institute. It would also, uh, I don't think we have any current candidates from Spain. But maybe that'll be the next resume coming down. Longer term, of course, LEAP aspires to uh develop some relationships that help us expand the talent pipeline because we know the more, these teachers are so hard to find and part of our mission is to build those university, other kinds of relationships to get the kinds of teachers that we need. So each round we go through this, we get a better sense of exactly what we're looking for.
Yeah, we just put a flyer together and Abby and I, uh, she's helping identify sort of like all of the bilingual universities, bilingual masters programs and we're targeting those and making sure that our, um, our jobs are posted on there. Um, and that's been a big source of a, a lot of our applicants um recently. So some of those, um, those targets are really working for us.
That's great.
Well, Abby's gonna be working for us for yet another um thirty to forty-five days, buttoning up, shoring up our ability to bring in more candidates. We're really pleased with the relationship and, uh, and, and the talent that she brings herself.
Great, thank you all. Any other uh questions, comments on the board bills before we go into scenario planning for COVID? And summer school in the fall. Okay, great. Let's do it.
So you, if I may continue, you, you have a document and it's, it's, it's was developed from a spreadsheet that Michael pulled together. This is our foundational document. It is, it's in, it's in, it's in its own evolution. We are adding to it daily and working from it and building it. It is by no means finished. Delly Ness has also been integrally involved in establishing um an acceleration team for the purpose of our immediate future and long, longer term future. I, I just wanted to open up this section with, with just a very basic statement. Then I'll throw it to Michael to, to go through the document with you. Today, we all learned about uh the DOE's movement to open up for summer school through distance learning. We will be responding with our own program for summer school. We do not have a finalized iteration of what that should look like. Delly Ness and, and the team and our teachers have been working diligently to address those details. We talked a little bit earlier about what those deadlines are and we have those deadlines. Uh, we're very happy and, 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 you know, this is, this is courageous work. Our kids have gone through the mill like all children have, uh, just the trauma of what they've gone through. But let's not forget that we're also a place of learning. And so how do we address their emotional learning skill needs in addition to their academic achievement? Our planning is around our children. And so we believe that our priority planning process and that, that Michael and Delly Ness are going to be presenting is, uh, is, is the first step in how we will uh be looking at our immediate and longer term future. Michael?
Sure, so obviously the most immediate is that summer school that you mentioned. Delly Ness, if you want to add anything to, to that process, I know the, our instructional leaders have a lot of different ways to deliver that.
Yes, um, yes, I'll jump into summer school. I think there's a lot um to sort of talk about. Um, I want to go back a little bit to the points in the um pre reads just to explain a little bit about the three different groupings that we were talking, that I was suggesting in the document. So the team and I, our teachers, our instructional leadership team, we've identified the students that we think would best benefit from additional summer programming. Um, initially, we thought, okay, these are kids who will get math, they'll get reading, um, they'll get all of it. But then as we looked at the data, we realized that our kids fall under three buckets in terms of interventions that they need. Uh, we have our students who are L learners who, uh, across the board content wise, they're doing okay, they're doing fine, but it's really the language portion um that they're struggling with and they need more intervention on building their English language um ability. So we need a strand there. On the other end, because we are an emergent school, we have students who are doing fine academically, but on the Spanish portion, right, their Spanish proficiency is not where we would hope it to be. So we needed a, a we need a strand for our students um who need support with the Spanish language. And then we have um our students that we're most concerned about. Those are our students who across the board are not doing well. They're struggling in all of the content areas regardless of the language of instruction. And so those students need much more intense intervention. Um, that goes beyond the, the language portion, but they need math. They need phonics in both languages. And so we have that strand as well. So as we're planning for summer school and we have our sixty students, we're categorizing them in these three buckets so that they can get tailored instruction specific to the needs of each student rather than having one program that does the same thing for all of our students. We're thinking about what do our students need? That's point number one. I think that now that we've heard the mayor talk about remote learning continuing for DOE schools, we're thinking about what are the implications that, that has on us as a charter? And those are still questions that we're still trying to get more definitive answers on. Um, and one thing that we do know is that we do want to provide um summer programming for our students. What we need to finalize um is what does that look like? What mode is that going to be given in? Is that in person? Is that remotely? Is that physical work packets for students? We need to think through what is best for students given the regulations and the guidelines that were given by the governor. Um, and so that's what we're waiting on. Regardless of that, we've, I've put together about four different, different scenarios for summer school. Number one being it happens, we can get into the building and plan as we've been doing. Um, what I put in the bullets pre reads. Second scenario is that we need to move this to a remote, remote learning platform, continue what we've been doing now. And there are a couple of things that we have in question there. We're thinking about what's developmentally appropriate for our students um and being cognizant of that. Making sure that we hear the input that our teachers have, that our little ones have and that our families have in terms of what works best for them. Um, and so it's really important for us, I would love to have sort of a focus group with our families and our parents to hear their input um and make sure that we take that into consideration. Is it a hybrid of work packets and remote learning? And then there's even the thought of do we focus on a strong social emotional learning summer programming enrichment for our fam, for our kids since they're missing that so much? Um, and really then focus on um creating a strong uh intervention program as soon as we start in August with our kids. So those are all things that we're considering within that remote learning um possibility. We are waiting to hear more and get more direction uh in terms of whether or not we have the flexibility of going into our buildings. And if so, what are the guidelines for that? We would ideally, our number one first choice would definitely be to be in our buildings and be able to have children um to interact with and work with um rather than doing a remote learning summer school programming.
And so, timing wise, we're talking about hopefully some clear guidance by the end of this month is what we've been told. And, but our, our dates would be effectively the, the four weeks of July. Uh, and then August, our teachers go into our three weeks of teacher training. And then, of course, all of our kids return at the end of August. So, um, I'll keep talking.
What I would just add to that is that we've already have about four to five teachers identified from our own staff that are willing to work um during the summer program. Um, so that also is something that has already been put into effect. We already know who would be able um to work the summer program and, and teach should we be able to offer that.
Right. So that's one piece of the scenarios that we're, we're talking about. Of course, July is, is one month and the school year itself is very long. And uh, without reading the document to you, which you've hopefully had a chance to, to look through for yourself, I, I did want to share a little bit of the logic behind sort of taking this, this tiered approach. I don't think a, a day goes by when I don't write down four. I don't think a, a day goes by when I don't write down four or five different new app, implications of the potential new reality. I know that's the true of everybody on our team and at other schools. But we've captured some of the obvious ones here. Obviously, first and foremost, there's matters of, of health, health of students, health of adults. And, and related to that, the reassurance to our families that kids will be healthy, that they are, will not be likely to get sick or pass things on, and that we will have systems in place to check, at least for anybody who has symptoms. And so we're thinking through the logistics even of arrival and dismissal to figure out, you know, how do you have at least adults checked? How do you change parent drop off protocols? What happens when a child arrives sneezing off of the bus? Where are they kept? Who's with them? You can kind of go on and on. But that part is not negotiable. How do we not use water fountains? How do we eat meals in a hygienic? More hygienic way? How do we do spacing? What kind of furniture are we ordering? So Maida's nodding because, you know, this is her every day right now, is thinking through all, all those implications. And really, eventually we'll be back in our building, we have to believe. And so no matter what, we have to plan for that basic level of adjustment. This, the scenario document and, and our thinking then goes on to talk about some increasingly radical other possibilities. If we have to do a high degree of distancing within the building, the science, scientific guidance seems to keep changing. But if we're at a point in August when that's the best practice, then, as you can see, that may change things about how we do recess, how we do walking through hallways, how do, how we do field trips, what kinds of after school activities we have. You know, our practice in this past year was to fill a school bus every Wednesday with kids crowded together. And then they go and run around and play soccer. And it's a wonderful part of what LEAP has been. And it doesn't look sustainable, looking back from the perspective of the month of May. And so there's a lot of implications there, just about physical separation. And then we start to think, what happens if we have to start late? If we have to start the year with can, a continued kind of distance learning? I I, I can't say enough about our teachers' efforts. And by the same token, this would never be how we would have designed a language immersion program. Let's take your six and seven year old and here's the Chromebook. And by this way, they will become bilingual and bilingual by fifth grade. And so with those dueling realities, we have to think about how do we make the best of it? How do we still build community? How do we let kids develop relationships with teachers? And, and I, I would love to, to know, you know, what the betting odds are. But we know that there's a significant enough chance that we'll be delayed in returning to our building, that we have to be ready for that and treat that as a real possibility. So I mentioned buying the Chromebooks. But obviously, our teacher training and, and our messaging with families, everything we do is going to have to start to shift, if that's the way it looks like things are going to head.
Yeah, I'd add on even to looking at our curriculum and our purchases. Making sure that as much as possible, there is that online platform availability. So that if we do have to shift to remote learning, you know, if there's another go at this in the fall, right, making sure that all of our platforms are also available in a digital platform, so that it can make that transition a bit smoother and easier for us. So as we purchase and look at what we're utilizing, we're also keeping an eye out for that as well.
It's, uh, it's also not hard to sort of brainstorm other even more radical kinds of scenarios. I think even if we were to consider, for example, staggered schedules or alternating weeks or things like that, they would have to be sort of a creature of real necessity. Because our students are young, our families are generally working. And our language immersion is our model. And so, you know, as I said before, we want to do everything we can to make a traditional in-person instructional experience possible. But we also know, and we're also thinking about if things had to change even, even more dramatically. We, uh, and, and the same would go if we, if we were delayed, as it references on the last page of the scenarios, if we were delayed in coming into our newly renovated space for any reason, we don't expect to be, but it's worth imagining that a construction project could be a little late, what would happen then? And so we've mapped out how we would use alternative spaces to still maintain distancing while having capacity for, for all the, all the classes that we'll have this year. And so you know, it is scenario based planning, but hopefully that's a flavor of what our team has been working on. And I'd love to hear questions, comments, thoughts, ideas.
Let me just add one more thing, that nobody has really perfected. And to, to your earlier point, Michael, nobody has really perfected a distance learning model for two-way immersion Spanish, like what we're doing. And so a lot of that is being learned, taking best practices from distance learning. But honestly, I think we're, we're, we're setting the pace ourselves and trying to figure that out. The second thing is radically looking at how, in the event that we have to continue remote distance learning in the new year, that we utilize technology to make every classroom a stage. That every classroom becomes its own show. And I use that term very loosely to say that our teachers will be presenting content in some cases to a few numbers of kids. And in other cases, maybe some kids are at home, and then they shift in schedule so that we allow for participation at some level. So we are looking at every single iteration of how we can best execute our model in the event that we are limited in our, in our physical facility.
Joaquin, you're on mute.
How rare it is for me to be on mute. So with respect to summer school, has the school department given you any guidance, any best practices? Are you able to share with your peers or perhaps elsewhere as to?
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation. I'm sorry. There's, there's a lot of conversation around the, the charter sector about different approaches. And there are schools, particularly those with testing grades, that are going so far as to start instruction as soon as they're back in the building with an earlier school year. I think in our case, I don't want to speak for Roberto and Delly Ness, but our training institute for teachers is so critical to the success of next year, that it's a little hard to think about shifting that around. I think it's about quality over quantity, even though we do have a long, longer school day and extended school year as it is. But yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of practice sharing going on. It's just, uh, we're just always looking for what's relevant to our age kids. In particular, the youngest kids. The DOE plan, for example, doesn't do anything for kids who are under third grade, which is all of our students. But we still feel the urgency that we felt in the following, at mid-year, to make sure everyone gets to grade level and is on track. So that's where that's where we're looking. But that's just my perspective. Anybody else?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've definitely discussed the earlier start, something that we're still discussing and, and contemplating, but yeah, we do not want to sacrifice our, our teacher training period in August. And I think that it's as a second year school, where we're still building our staff culture, our community, we're having new teachers join our team, it's really important that we have that time to train our teachers on the LEAP way and make sure they're as best prepared. Especially now with this COVID situation and knowing that many of our students are going to need even extra support, both on the emotional and the academic. And you need to make sure that your teachers are prepared to handle that and that they understand the game plan as well as what are we going to do as soon as we get our students, rather than just having our students come and not having our teachers prepared on how to manage that situation.
One of the investments that we made is a partnership on the Training Institute with TNTP. And we believe that providing our teachers with those skill sets is so important to really give them the tools that they need to be more effective professionals, more effective artists and teachers as they are. We have additional scholars that are being brought in as well. Now, brought in could be virtually brought in. As a matter of fact, TNTP is planning for all of its development courses to be online, if that's still the case, Delly Ness. But we are not dismayed or dissuaded from providing our team with the best possible preparation for the coming year.
So I, I was not, and thank you for that. I, I guess I was also thinking about the safety and, and the safety and operational protocols. Whether there's any guidance, whether, I don't even mean here, but perhaps one has to look abroad.
Well, there is, I'm sorry, there is, there is federal guidance and I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
Well, I don't know about our federal guidance, but anyway, yes, perhaps. I'm not disagreeing with you. Well, that's not.
I'm just saying that the CDC has school reopening. It's helpful to think about. Now, there's, even there, there's endless practical questions, right? Are, are we going to try to? Would it make any difference to put gloves on a six-year-old? I'm not sure it would. How do you practice speech if you're wearing a mask? Like, there's, there's a lot to think through there, but we, we have reviewed those guidelines. And then, of course, hopefully the governor will come, come through and will get a clear yes or no on summer school the end of this month. And that'll, that'll be the most important guidance.
There was an interesting news today on just how important HVAC systems are, ventilation systems are. Unfortunately, that's always a big expense, but perhaps it might be useful for you all to consider bringing in one of these, I'm not saying standard HVAC people and seeing if, if that might be a one feasible thing. Apparently, if the, the air is apparently inside the airport, not the airport, the airplane are good. It's in the airport that they're not, because the, the pressure system isn't strong enough. So, so again, all I'm suggesting at is because of a lack of guidance on the federal level, there are green shoots of advice and practices that are going on. To the extent you can look around, I mean, it may not all come from the expected places. Does that make sense? But you are in a ventilated system. That might be one thing. Obviously, your protocols, you've already started talking about it. If they come out of the bus and actually, they shouldn't even go into the bus. So you might even have to train your bus drivers. So I, again, I'm just adding, I don't want to.
Thank you. No.
Operational things I was thinking about.
On the HVAC side, it's good that you brought that up. We're actually, just today, I'm getting a proposal from our current contractor for the repair of two of the compressors that are not working on the second and third floor. But also his recommendations for filtration of all the existing machinery. In addition, we made a good decision last summer that we bored eighteen inch holes in the walls of the building to bring in fresh air. And the current guidance is that having fresh air circulated in a public building is the best way to be able to, obviously, to circulate air. So thank you for suggesting that.
You might, you might also want to add a fan to those areas where they're coming in the fresh air.
They're all blowed in, yeah, it's all, it's all blowers, yeah.
But anyway, that was just an example of the sources of information at our there, because we do not have a source that is curating, that is curating these best practices and processing them for you. So unfortunately, you're going to have to do it.
Yeah, and, and that's right. And as, you know, as always, you know, things do emerge locally. The Charter Association of New York has been putting together calls, our authorizer's been attending, the Charter Center's had calls. So we've been trying to avail ourselves of, of that. It does continue to change, but we're going to stay on top of it. Nothing really could be any more important.
A quick question, speaking of changing information, will we be seeing kind of a revision of the scenario plan at each board meeting moving forward as information changes?
Or an update, right?
We're actually moving comprehensively on establishing an acceleration team. Delly Ness, would you like to speak to that a little bit? The team will be rolling out.
Yeah, so we're creating a team that's focused on our restarting plan, our relaunching, opening up. And that takes into consideration the summer program. So we have, excuse me, I was eating. We have all of our instructional leadership team as part of that team of cohort. And so we're organizing ourselves to think through what are the systems that we need to put in place? That's including the scenario planning document. How do we plan for each scenario? Making sure and keeping in mind that like the number one goal here is academic achievement and making sure that our kids are on grade level. So with that in mind, how, what do we do in terms of our backwards planning, in terms of if, if we're expecting our kids to be at grade level by the end of the following year? What are the things that we need to put in place in all of these different scenarios to possibly get there? And so that team is formed by myself, Dorsa, our instructional coach, Christina, our other instructional coach, our special education coordinator, Edgar Sanchez. And of course, Grueto and Michael are part of that as well. And then we work very closely with the operations team, so that when we're coming up with all of these scenarios on the operational end, we're communicating in terms of what is needed on the operations end in order to make this happen.
The importance of the, this, this acceleration team approach is that we're being driven by academic outcomes. And so if we want to achieve those outcomes, how do we backwards plan to ensure that our building is safe, that our kids are safe, that our families are safe? And so we will be updating not only this plan, but layers of plans that include all of our colleagues here, Maida and Michael, myself. So every month you'll get a report. Long answer to your question.
We're even looking, the instructional leadership team and myself, we're working on our pacing calendars, our scope and sequences for next year. One thing that we do not want to do is sort of water down the content, or say, we're going to reteach kindergarten or reteach first grade. We want to make sure that grade level content is continued to be provided to our students. But then thinking through, what are the additional lessons that need to go into those units? Where do we see our students probably most struggling with? How do we add extra intervention blocks within our schedule to then be able to do some of that remediation without taking away from still providing students with grade level content?
So that's a yes. Updated, updated plan.
That definitely sounds like a yes.
Really quickly, could I, do we have a quick breakout of the sixty-five or so kids that would be summer school kids, how they got over the strands?
Yeah, I, well, I, I have a draft copy. It's, so I have all of the sixty-five kids. We're in the middle of putting them where they belong. We're finishing up our so we are actually, right now, this week, we've been doing, finalizing our assessments. And so we're finalizing like DRAs and EDLs. We're doing those virtually with all of our students. The last few ones are, they're all supposed to be done by tomorrow, fingers crossed. So we're waiting for that few data to make some final decisions. But we do have a list of all of those students and within the, by the end of this week, I can have that list in terms of which kids are in which category.
Okay, yeah, that was my next question, is whether we're, whether, how much the DRA is going to play into that?
Yeah, I mean, we have a pretty good idea, but we want to make sure that it's backed up by the most recent data that we're getting as well.
And that's, and that's pretty consistent with the results of the fall evaluation, right?
Right, right. Um, I, I mean, I, one good news to share is that we are seeing growth, right? I mean, these are being done virtually. Right, right. I I mean, I, one good news to share is that we are seeing growth, right? I mean, these are being done virtually. But most of our kids have been demonstrating growth. We've had a number of students who've showed more than one year's worth of growth in such a short period of time of the. Intervention plan that we've put in place. So it's. It's good. The growth is right, some kids just moved one level, some kids, like I said, have made more than a year's worth of growth. But again, I think it's just shows all of the efforts and work that was put prior, you know, as you all know, we put in this intervention plan. Once we got the data and we put a lot of effort into it and it was sort of heartbreaking not being able to. Formally get that data to see whether or not it's working. Now that we're doing some of these DRA and EDLs virtually, although that's just one data point, right? It's not everything. But to be able to see those that growth and reading for many of our students is promising and just. Nice to see for all of us, myself, the teachers, that all of the work that we're doing, that we have done. Have had some impact.
Nice.
It's definitely a win. It's have gone through this year, teachers have gone through this year, it's.
It makes you kind of like, you're seeing the growth and you don't want it to slide back and it's like, what can you do to keep maintaining that growth? And not have that summer slump?
Are are we going to have the benefit of that? Recent findings and comparative findings in our next meeting, perhaps?
Yeah, so as soon as we have all of the data, I would like to put a report in terms of what that data is showing us and how much growth we've seen overall.
And the growth is is even includes the student who were having difficulties last time.
Yeah.
Great, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, and it will have a lot. We will have a budget the next meeting, we will.
But also the academic committee too.
Yes, no, yeah.
Madam Chair, don't forget also that those items that were tabled, just a point of reference. Intro meeting.
Yes.
For the purpose of getting those business items out of the way so that we can have a robust conversation. At the next regular meeting.
No, I agree. I think that we should have the contracts as a separate. Term meeting so to just give as much room as possible to those other items. So that would be a lot.
So I. Mindful of the time. So.
I think that unless, oh, go ahead.
I wasn't aware of any board norms and development items, but you may. The board.
No, I don't think we have any items of discussion at this specific meeting. I am going to convene with the executive committee a little bit separately. We, one of the items that we'll need to concentrate on in the next two months or so is the ED evaluation. And so we will meet separately to talk through some our procedure for that. And and we'll kind of just need to convene and and talk more about, you know, it's, it'll have been a year, a full school year. Soon and we'll need to kind of regroup a bit and talk about commitments for next year. We'll have to. Re-up the, I need to kind of, I need to look back in the minutes to see the exact meetings when everybody was officially voted in as an officer. We kind of just need to, we'll need to review all of that. I don't want to take up time to do that this meeting, but I just kind of want to give a heads up. To folks about some of the upcoming norms and development items that we'll have to discuss, but we we can meet about that. Separately prior to the next meeting.
Are there any public comments?
From the public?
I'm not hearing any. We were. We were fortunate last meeting to have one of our teachers sit in as a member of the public. I don't. I think she was probably tired from a day of DRA exams today. So.
I don't think we have anybody. Everybody here is a panelist at this point, so.
Do our other panelists have anything to say?
Would you like to say anything? It's okay.
No, I'm very impressed by the work that you're doing, very intense. And I can see that you're getting quite a lot done at these meetings if this is a typical meeting. So it's pretty impressive. And actually, this plan. You know, if I could share it with the team, S E D, just as sort of a model.
I told you, Roberto.
Things that can be done in the situation, that'd be okay?
Well, if LEAP can get more funding, that would be fabulous.
I'm lucky I'm getting paid.
And overtime too.
Thank you, thank you very much, Paula. We appreciate that. We will certainly.
Paula and her colleagues, of course, will be, will be joining us in a series of calls. They'll be joining the board officers on Thursday, but also. Parents, we've had almost a waiting list to get into that meeting because the parents want to talk.
Oh, really? Great, wonderful.
And also teachers and observing some live and stuff like that. To that in a couple of days.
Looking forward to it.
All right. I do not believe we have any reason to go into executive session. So we can then move and anybody has any final questions or comments? Once, maybe twice. All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. Motion.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned, seven twenty nine, one minute early, thank. All of your time, your efforts, and please take care and be safe.
Okay.
See you on Thursday.
Bye bye.